Good evening, everybody. Welcome. So nice to see everybody. Happy Spring. Welcome back from Spring recess. It's Thursday, April 13th. It's my pleasure to make a motion for the Board to return to open session seconded by Ilana. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, six zero. Terrific. And if everybody would please join us, as is our custom, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Terrific. Thank you so much. Tonight, we are very much looking forward to hearing an update and an overview on mathematics across our district K through 12. Welcome to our staff developers, our curriculum instructional leaders, our students. We can't wait to hear from all of you. And we're excited also to hear a brief report from our tri-state visit a few weeks ago. And before our attention to the ones, I will pause for Board announcements. And then perhaps at the end of the meeting, we'll come back to the subcommittee reports with the Board's permission. Are there any Board announcements for tonight? Please, Bill?
First announcement, he's not here yet, was I saw nine to five.
Thank you.
And it was very, very good. Not good for high school. It's just amazing. It's just good, period. And it was very impressive. I'm always impressed how well this is done. And we're not a high school like, you know, is only taking people who are interested in performing arts or something. It was just complicated dancing and lots and lots of dialogue. One of my recurring nightmares, I don't know why it is, but is I'm in a play and I don't know the work, don't know the lines. So whenever I see people on stage who can pull it off, I'm always very impressed. So it was just, as always, like, our kids aren't in it. We don't know anybody's name anymore, but we still go just because we like to go. And it was excellent.
Thank you for saying that, Bill. And yes, in his absence, congratulations to Jack, to Jake, pardon me, who more than broke a leg. And it was amazing to see so many students on stage, so much opportunity for so many students. And especially with the stark reality of having had to pause so many of those activities in the pandemic. It was terrific and well attended by the community. You know, every performance, from what I understand, so congratulations.
On and offstage, I mean, we were, Bill and I were there the last night. And so they gave out awards at the very end, and they called up people to receive like flowers. And there were so many people behind the scenes that barely even knew were in the room that came up to receive such awards. I mean, it really is incredible. It's not just the cast, but the crew. It was remarkable.
The pit orchestra, the entire cast.
They're always very, yeah, they're very careful about thanking everybody because they really do make sure that the, everybody gets. Because apparently this was also particularly complicated in terms of quick change, in terms of, I still don't know how to do that. Quick change in the costumes.
Yeah.
It was good. And the orchestra, there's a, there were a few adults in the orchestra. Is it a, it's like a thing that some of them come?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Lovely. Yeah, thank you. Congratulations to everybody.
Is that Jake? I can say it all over again.
I think Jake won't be joining us this evening.
So I have one more announcement.
Please, yes.
So I've given it a lot of thought and I've decided not to run for a fourth term on the Board of Education. At a later meeting, I'll have more to say about my time on the Board, but I want to make my intentions clear well ahead of the upcoming election. For now, it will suffice to say that being elected barely each time to the Board of Ed has been one of the singular honors of my life. I do not make this decision lightly, but I am very much comforted by the fact that I am positive the district is in very good hands in terms of trustees, in terms of administration, and of course, all the teachers and staff that make this such a wonderful district. Again, you will not get off this easily. At a later meeting, I will demand the floor to offer my parting soliloquy. As you all can imagine, I would find the opportunity to pontificate too tempting to pass up. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We really appreciate the courtesy of knowing that you've made a decision and that you've communicated it to our entire community. Thank you. And we very much look forward to celebrating you and perhaps roasting you at a future date when we celebrate those staff members and members of our community who are otherwise also departing from their service to Katona Lewisboro. And I miss you very much and thank you. We look forward to future opportunity to celebrate with you on your decision. Any further announcements?
I just wanted to, over the break, I was able to actually attend a couple of different sporting events. And I just really want to acknowledge and recognize the students, the coaches, the parents and our staff who are all here, like during a time when other people are taking a break and working hard at their craft. And it was just really fun to see the kids. It was like so funny to come here during a vacation and it was really busy here. And there was a lot going on. And so I just wanted to acknowledge everyone for doing that. And it's really nice to see the kids out, lots of activity.
Wonderful. Thank you. And if there are no further announcements from Board members, we would welcome your announcements. Please, Andrew.
I'm really just going to plug some upcoming events tonight because there's a lot of things coming up. Next, next week in particular, on Monday night is my next and I think last for this year Superintendent's Coffee at Increase Miller Elementary School. And as always, anyone who wishes to come is welcome, and I hope people will come. We look forward to chatting. And then on Tuesday night, there's an orchestra and choral concert here at John J. High School. On Wednesday night, I want to make a very loud plug for this, is our Learning Cafe on Sustainability. And we hope that people will sign up and come join us. We're doing this in the month of April when Earth Day occurs. We're very excited to have students with us and have members of our staff and members of the Board, actually, from our Sustainability Subcommittee, as well as community members from that Subcommittee, all sharing lots of information, but learning together about the topic of sustainability. So that's Wednesday night next week. And there's still time to sign up if people are interested in joining us. There's a link online and in emails that we've sent out. And then on Thursday night next week, it's the Science Symposium here at John J. High School. We've heard about some of the amazing award-winning science projects that are being presented that night, along with many other students. And then more sustainability celebrations to follow on the 25th. Prior to the Board meeting that night, we'll have a celebration out there, as we did last year, again with booths from community, community members and students and staff, followed by a presentation to our Board that night from our Sustainability Subcommittee. And then finally, on April 29th, it's J-Fest, not very far away, and the weather has warmed up nicely in time for that. So lots of things on the very near horizon.
Perfect. Thank you. Lots to look forward to. That sounds great. I think with that, then we are ready for our first featured presentation and look forward to hearing to those of you who've joined us tonight. And it's my pleasure to turn it over to you, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to quickly interrupt, though, Mary, and say that the two presentations tonight are linked a little bit. We're going to hear from Tri, about tri-states afterwards. But one of the things that our tri-state visitors said to us that we were most thrilled about was how much our students, particularly our fifth graders, I think they were saying, love studying math. So that was really nice to hear, and I'm sure we'll hear more about that in the group that's to come. So now, Mary, thank you so much.
Thank you. And so I'm going to invite my colleagues, some of my colleagues to leave and other colleagues to join us, please. So we are joined by some of our curriculum leaders this evening. For K-2, our curriculum leader is Marissa Donahue. She is a kindergarten teacher at Meadow Pond for 3-5. It's Amy Signori, who's an interventionist, also at Meadow Pond. At middle school, it's Jessie Weiss. And for high school, Michelle Guardia. And we're also joined by my colleague Selena Hedigan, who's our K-12 staff developer in mathematics.
Wonderful.
And we're also joined by some students who we'll introduce in a little while. And they are going to take us through a very interactive exercise in mathematics to help us understand how they look.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Welcome, everybody.
So on this slide, I know you've seen the learning commitment many, many, many times. But we just think once in a while, it's very important to kind of really take a look at the sub-questions that we always see that stem or the beginning statement that we strive to create learning experiences that are intellectually engaging, relevant, and take place in an active learning environment. But those questions underneath that really prompt us to think about what engaging experiences look like, relevant experiences, how do we ensure that lessons have purpose beyond test results? And this active learning environment, I think as you listen to our teachers and our students this evening, you'll see lots of evidence of the learning commitment at work. And here we have, we have had a shift. This is the first year that these new next generation math standards are fully in place for the year. And this is just a graphic that shows some of the strands of content and practices in K-12 mathematics. So, you know, there are strands that you can see similarities, commonalities across all of the grades. And students are working on these practices K through 12. So, you know, believe it or not, even in the very early elementary grades, students are learning things about geometry, right? And learning how numbers work. So it's interesting to think about it that way and see those connections. But I just thought on this slide, this is another piece from the introduction. And it really sets the stage for much of the work in mathematics that you'll hear about this evening. So just to do a very quick read aloud, "To prepare students for the changes in the way we live and work and to be sure that our education system keeps pace with what it means to be mathematically literate, what it means to be collaborative, to collaboratively problem solve, we need a different approach to daily teaching and learning. We need content-rich standards that will serve as a platform for advancing children's 21st century mathematical skills, their abstract reasoning, their collaboration skills, their ability to learn from peers and through technology, and their flexibility as a learner in a dynamic learning environment. Students need to be engaged in dialogue and learning experiences that allow complex topics and ideas to be explored from many angles and perspectives. They also need to learn how to think and solve problems for which there is no one solution and learn mathematical skills along the way." And I think that statement really sets the stage for much of what you'll hear this evening and much of what we've been working on over the course of years. So just giving a little context, thinking about K through 12 math courses, of course, kindergarten through eighth grade, math is a daily subject. Then we go into algebra, geometry, Algebra II, pre-calculus, calculus, and then we have some mathematics electives. And at John J. High School, those courses include sections for extended honors and advanced placement as well. And this is just a graphic. This is also on our website on the high school page. But just to give you a sense of some of the courses we offer and kind of the flow, what it looks like for students to go from middle through high school and the different options they may have. And one thing that was really wonderful this year at our annual retreat, we have a curriculum leaders retreat in the summer. And we have a few district-wide curriculum leaders or district-wide curriculum council meetings every year. And our leaders here have been working on one common goal, K through 12. And so this year, they created this goal. It was just having, actually ran out to get a bite to eat and ran into Amy down in the plaza. And we were saying how really astounding it is. It's kind of hard to think about any goal that would work really well, K through 12, especially in mathematics. We feel like this goal in particular has really made a difference for all that we do. And it's something that serves all levels well. So with that, I will turn it over to Marissa Donahue to help us learn about K-2, what our primary students are learning.
Hi, everybody. So our primary students, and you know, this is obviously the foundation where math begins and their feelings about math begin. And these are just the basics of what we cover, which is actually a lot. So number sense, problem solving, counting cardinality, perseverance, which is a lifelong skill, communicating thinking. We were trying to start that as early as kindergarten, addition and subtraction concepts. So really, we're trying to start that as early as possible so that we can build upon that throughout the grade levels. And as Mary mentioned in our, the learning goals of the entire grade, all of the grade levels, you know, engaging math activities really are what keep the kids going, the growth mindset. You know, even if you don't know it now, you're going to get it. And we really want to build their math confidence because that is an ongoing issue for a lot of kids, just feeling like nervous about math. I can't do it. But we want to teach them, listen, we're going to make this fun and you're going to get it. And you should really feel confident and good about yourself when it comes to math. You know, mindset is everything, really, mind over matter. You have to let them know that you're going to be able to do this. And there's a lot of studies about math anxiety. Math anxiety causes difficulty for students as early as first grade. So really, that's what is young, is six years old. They're already feeling nervous, feeling that they can't do it. I've seen it firsthand. I've taught, you know, everything up to sixth grade, mostly, you know, K-1, 2. And you really see them already feeling nervous about math when, you know, tears, and really, we want them to feel confident. Research shows that when parents engage math talk activities with their young children, their children are more likely succeed, to succeed in math in their school. And we, as adults, we kind of set that up for them, you know, to say in front of your kid, oh, I'm bad at math, or I'm not good at math. You know, instead, we should be saying, oh, hey, look at these numbers. Oh, let's make this into a math game. We have to set that example for them, you know. Studies show that parents or adults or teachers modeling that effort of positivity really impacts them, you know. So instead of saying, oh, I'm not good at this, show them that, oh, I tried this. Maybe I didn't get it the first time, but show them that you struggle. Show them that if you keep working at it, even if you don't get it the first time, you're going to be successful at some point. And just having a positive attitude. And so we're trying to create this culture throughout all of the grades. But we're really, we're trying to incorporate like hands-on, really engaging activities, visuals, manipulatives, literature, trying to notice math all throughout the school in everything that we do, verbalizing math concepts, a lot of music and movement out there. There are so many great activities that we do in the classroom now, songs, jumping. It really is so engaging for them, lots of literature. We try to keep a good thematic activities going to keep them engaged. This is from October, which is why we have snakes and bugs and bones. And this is Desmond's little video of a little activity that Desmond did. And we just tried to move from, you know, he does some numbers and some 10 frames and, you know, just from the concrete to, like, you know, manipulatives, drawing, writing, the concrete, the representational. So I don't know if you wanted us to do that.
So Rich, are we able to play it right from here?
Desmond, are you liking math? Yeah, are you good at it? How'd you get so good at it?
Because I play all these math games.
Yeah, so what are we doing right now?
We're playing math games.
Yeah, are you counting? Alright, so you have to count your frogs next, so show me how you're going to count them. Let me hear you. One.
Four.
Good job. So now, what are you going to do here? Show me where's your pencil.
This is actually easy.
Is it? Okay, good.
See?
Oh, very nice. And now what do you have to do here? What is that called?
Counter.
Well, you're drawing a counter in the 10.
Three.
Good. Two.
Three. Four. Five.
Oh, I like how you went to the end. Good job.
So yeah, so still having that pencil paper, but really just trying to keep it hands-on and engaging and fun. So everybody's feeling good about the work that they're doing.
Now I'll turn it over to Amy Signori to talk to us about third through fifth grade.
Sure. So students in grades three through five builds upon this great foundation that our primary teachers build for our students. You can see what the focus is. We move from solidifying addition and subtraction concepts, moving into multiplication and division, and then introduction fractions. And then, of course, as they're getting ready to leave, fifth grade, students are using all four operations and they're using them with both whole numbers, fractions, and decimals. So all of that sort of comes together. And then there's this huge piece that we're all math people. And so we continue that theme related to our math goal and encourage students to view themselves as math people. All you have to do is do math and be a person. On this next slide, we have a couple of examples. So there's the low floor, high ceiling tasks. And those are tasks, activities, and problems that have an easy way for all students to access it. It's kind of a level playing field and all kids can get started. But what kids can do with it, it really has this high ceiling. And, and students who are able to kind of take on more challenging aspects of the task. The task is created to match their skill set. So it's really wonderful, those types of tasks. We also have some math routines. Those are structured activities where children participate in some, you know, fluency activities, reasoning, problem solving. We work a lot on language, able to explain our thinking. And actually, there's a student in the bottom there. There's one example that I want to show you. It's, it has an acronym of W O B B, and it stands for Which One Doesn't Belong. And so students look at four images, four numbers, four representations, four equations. And three of those images have something in common, and the fourth one does not. And there typically at least more than one solution. So actually, if you click on that acronym, we should go to a video.
Now, Rich, I might need your help here because there are two embedded videos. And it's, let's see if we can. Okay.
No worries. I got lots to say. While we're waiting for that to pop up, we also are emphasizing a lot of use with manipulatives. And since students have them out on their desks, you can see in both of those other pictures that they're using those to support them. We also have incorporated literature. There's literature that's created just for reinforcing math skills. And then there's a way of looking at literature that's just in our library and adding in this math strand throughout it. There, there's a great program that we've been incorporating pieces of that into this year, Math by the Book. And it's really been exciting. You can see two students are going back into the book, referencing that, and then completing some math. I have a second video if the first one isn't ready to roll.
Yeah. Sounds like grabbing a.
I'll take that as.
Some technical difficulties.
No worries.
Okay.
The last part in that blue box is talking about songs and rhymes. And so the third grade class in all, the entire grade level, had practiced a math song to learn their fact tables. And so there's.
Do you have to sing it?
You know, you can, you can. I'll, I'll take it. But I'll shut off my mic to hear me sing. So there's a clip of just the audio, which might, might work out a little bit better there, where the third grade is actually presenting at one of our community meetings. They were so proud. And so they all stood up and presented back to all of our K to five students. So I don't know if that one will run.
I think some.
Okay, Which One Doesn't Belong. Here we go.
Oh, do you want us to tell you?
Is this a test?
Yes, right? How did you know?
Are you smarter than a fifth grader? We'll see if this.
So, so what was neat about that particular classroom with Which One Doesn't Belong, they actually got so good at explaining Which One Doesn't Belong that we took it a step further. And they now create them for their classmates, which is really great. And then they take pictures of them on their iPads, and then they put them up as a little station. And other students rotate through and try and figure out Which One Doesn't Belong and try and see if they can come up with two. Just a couple of other quotes there on the right-hand side that we're seeing and hearing, you know, kids really making that, you know, commitment come to life with some of their ideas and thinking about how much fun it is to do math, how they advocate for themselves. Wait, can I just show you this with manipulatives? It makes more sense this way. Basically, I can tell you more about it. And, and then this realization, these aha moments where I had no idea one one thousandth of something was that small. Just, that was from one of our literature pieces that we did. And, you know, just to actually see it and visualize it and make that math come alive. So, so with that being said, and kind of ending with a fifth grader, we'll move on to Selena, who's going to highlight some of our 360-degree math that we brought to fifth grade this year.
Yeah. So as Mary had highlighted from the next generation standards, our responsibility as teachers is to prepare our children for their future careers and their future jobs. And we all know they're not the jobs of the past, not even the past 20 years, 50 years, 100 years. So, you know, every few years, when Fortune 500 comes out with that list of the skills they want for the next generation, some of those skills are at the top that used to, they were still there before, but now they want, you know, children, employees who can collaborate, can work on teams, can think critically, and can problem solve, like on their feet. All of us experience that in our jobs now. So as teachers, we cannot teach the way that we taught 50 years ago, definitely not 100 years ago, maybe not even 10 years ago. So we need to, to change the way that we're teaching. So in Katona Lewisboro, we've had this initiative, which is called 360-degree math. It's also, sometimes you might see it as vertical learning. And when I got here three years ago, I was excited to see that it was happening in the middle school. And Jessie Weiss was spearheading that. And I was excited because when I taught sixth grade, I saw it on Twitter and thought it was a great idea, right? And I tried it and it, the impact was amazing. So it was so exciting to come here and see that it was already starting in the middle school. So we showed it to fifth grade teachers and they were really keen to try it and willing to be flexible with trying something brand new. So we trained them last year, and all the fifth grade students in Katona Lewisboro right now are experiencing this teaching model. So what you'll see is there's four features of it that make it really successful for children. The first one is, and when we do hopefully play the video in a minute, the first one, they're all standing. So you can see that from the photos. So when you're standing up, there's, you know, your core has to be strong. You have to balance yourself, even though you're not thinking about it. And there's more blood and more oxygen going to your brain. So you're more, you think, you think on your feet, right? That's probably where that came from. The second thing is they're on whiteboards, though, which are also called non-permanent vertical surfaces nowadays, right? I don't know. But so, so there's a lot of research about that, that whiteboards, like, I mean, everyone likes writing on a whiteboard, right? But it's more than that. It's that you're more able to take risks. When you're on paper and pencil and erasing, it's annoying. It doesn't look nice, right? A whiteboard, kids are more able, and adults, to take a risk. It disappears right away. It frees up your thinking. So that's the second thing. The third thing is they're collaborating. And you'll see that there, they're talking to each other. That's one of the skills that we want to promote for our future citizens and working together. And the other big thing is the, why it's called 360-degree math is that a teacher has a 360-degree view of her students. So if you imagine when you were in school, maybe the teacher was hovering over your work, right? You might have been feeling uncomfortable. Sure, I could see four or five kids during math time if I'm walking around the room that way. And we, and we do do that. But imagine seeing everybody, the entire math period, all the time and all their work. So it's much, teaching's always hard, but this is much harder. Because as a teacher, you have to think on your feet like you've always had to. But, you know, normally you might have a lesson and you know what you're going to expect. You're going to do this, and then you're going to do that. And you know what you're doing next. But with 360, they're on the whiteboards collaborating. You don't know what they might be doing. They're persevering. They're talking to each other. They're using their prior knowledge. And you might instantly have to change the direction of your lesson based on the work that you're seeing, which we wouldn't have done before when we were just looking at a few children on paper and pencil. So you have to really be thinking on your feet and making changes, like, oh, I'm not going to do the problem I thought I would do next. Because, look, they already know how to do it, so I have to move on to this. Or I just saw these children having this amazing conversation and I want the whole class to hear it. So we're going to go walk over to that whiteboard and talk to those children. So all of those four things really make 360 quite impactful for student learning. So the video, if it works, is the children talking about the impact it's had in their classroom this year? Let's cross our fingers and see.
He's saying no.
Shaking your head?
Okay, I'll tell you a little bit. Okay, I'll tell you a little bit.
But the children in Mr. Cravelli and Ms. Penasara's class were so proud of themselves and they know you're going to watch it. So I know you all have the slides and you can watch it later if you didn't watch it already. But it'd be nice for the community to see. But basically, you'll, in Paul's class, the way he's teaching it is children are standing up and they're going with their partner right away for the first problem, which is called the solvency share. And they're making a plan and talking about how are we going to solve this problem with each other? And everyone's up and working. The student there on the right, she was sharing that we do a gallery walk. So you walk around and you see other people's strategies and you might say, oh. Well, you might say, oh, I was wrong or, oh, I like that strategy. So she went back to her board and revised it based on something she saw when she walked around and looked in the classroom. And then there's some students that I interviewed that were talking about like the collaborative nature, like being kind of a critical friend and nicely like talking to somebody if you disagreed with their solution and how to support people. It really turns the classroom into a room with 25 teachers instead of just one. Everyone can help each other. So I think they've had so far a really positive experience. We're looking forward to maybe rolling it down to some other classrooms.
Hoping for third and fourth grade next year.
Yeah, we've got some other teachers, teachers are seeing it and they're like, what are they doing? And can I do that? So. And so this wasn't just like Selena's good idea she saw on Twitter one morning. What I'm happy to say that there's, this is Orwin's biggest seller. It's kind of a hot new math book that we should all have on our shelves. And it's building thinking classrooms. And he has 14 practices for changing classrooms into thinking rooms because learning can often be passive. Like if you go in, you sit down at your desk and you get your workbook and your paper and pencil, you're automatically passive. That's why the standing up is beginning to, is already just by standing, making you more, less passive. So one of his practices is vertical, vertical boards is what he calls it. It's the 360 math. And he implements three practices at the beginning and vertical boards are the, one of the first three things he does. That and non-curricular tests and randomized grouping of children, which we've been trying in the middle school. So the middle school math department is reading this book. The high school math department is also reading this book. And we're hoping next year that the elementary is going to be reading the book with our support.
Oh, my turn?
On to Jesse.
I'm not gonna, it's okay if I don't read, right? Just kind of continuing the dialogue. A lot of this started several years ago around my innovation cohort I was involved in. And then when things kind of changed with COVID, and I just started looking at for other ways to get kids involved. And some of the things I started reading sort of brought to mind that historically, math classrooms have a natural hierarchy, whether we mean them to or not, that's just implicit. And more and more research shows that the kids can tell at a very young age, right? One of the jokes I say to these guys is no one gets a gold star when they get a 20 out of 100. It's a little kid, you're not getting that same reinforcement. So we were looking for just different ways to get kids involved that leveled that playing field, that didn't rely on past experience, past success, but could sort of get everyone involved in something and not necessarily curricular. So it wasn't, well, I've never done well before because we're just looking. So these are my helpers, I'm going to introduce them. We have Taylor over here, who is a current student of mine, Mia, so former student, seventh grade, Susanna's, seventh grade, and Aubrey, who I will not call Audrey or she will kill me. Like I did earlier today. So they're going to kind of show you what a data talk looks like. It's once again, like Selena, it's not something I made up, just through research. If you know anything about Stanford is doing some work in their Department of Math Education. And it's just an opportunity for kids to engage with math and things that are related to the real world without being calculating things, without having to worry about being right or wrong. So I think they're going to run you through a data talk. I'm hoping the graphics enough to see. But they're going to do the whole thing, hopefully. You ready? I hope this is on. Remember, get close to the mic.
Okay, so the purpose of data talks are to think about math in a real-life situation.
And like this allows everyone to participate and like not worry about being right or wrong?
So this data talk is about hotter summers in different places. We do data talks like this every so often.
And there is no wrong answer in this data talk?
So what do you notice and what do you wonder?
And they are literally asking you directly. What do you notice or what do you wonder?
What do you notice and wonder?
The first question is like in the question that she just asked, what do you, what do you wonder? No, what do you notice?
I noticed that there's like one mountain that's, or one graph that's gray and then one that's beige and red. So I wonder what those different colors mean.
Different colors can be a way to differentiate the pieces of data that we have and stuff.
I noticed that we have in New York, more abnormally cold days.
It looks like New York more than any other place.
I noticed Phoenix looks kind of funky, like it's, like it's, you know, the data's making a quieter shape.
To be fair, we put you a little more on the spot. When we do this in class, they type privately in a discussion that they can reply to so they have time to gather their thoughts a little bit, but that would take a while.
We're all back to our sixth grade.
Like today, it's getting hotter.
Seems to all these cities.
Is there anything you wonder about the data talk? Like why?
I'm surprised to see that Chicago doesn't have more abnormally cold days. That doesn't meet my assumption.
You thought it was just hard for you. It's also something that takes practice, right? So we do it on and off regularly so that they get used to the idea of just sharing ideas and not worrying. Was it Mary that started? Right, just talking about what you see. There are no wrong answers and it gives a lot of access because if someone comes in uncomfortable from past experience in math, they can simply share that it's graphs of temperatures in cities and that's not wrong. But it also, it goes to what I think Amy was mentioning, the low floor, high ceiling. Someone may notice a pattern about a specific city, maybe they live there. New Orleans on there, right? Mia's from New Orleans and Mia can suffer through heat with a jacket on. You know, Canada. But that, like even that was something that was like, you know, interesting because you could talk to me about what, you know, and Phoenix, as Selena pointed out, is such a big difference and you start to be able to talk about things without the kids worrying about being right or wrong. You know, there is no right or wrong answer. It's just what do we see and how can we engage with the data?
That really helped me, like, because I'm a little bit quieter in class. So like not having a right or wrong answer, like it encouraged me to participate more.
Words like, words like things. Things that like label, what they're like showing and not also like not giving you an answer, but it's kind of giving you like a way to break about it.
Oh, like some of the extra text on there? Other thoughts, guys?
It's really nice to be able to collaborate with other students and sometimes someone will have a great idea and that will spark something else or make you think something that you would never have thought of about that idea.
Being able, when we do it online, being able to look through the comments about what other students commented, like Aubrey said, it gives you an opportunity to think of like, oh, I would have never thought of that.
Yeah. And like putting like real life into math and like discussing that with your classmates.
And it also provides, if I can jump in, guys, is that okay? It does provide an entry point. I think I talked about this at another meeting. You know, there's traditionally, it's like, how do we wedge things into math? But right off the bat, sustainability comes in. We've done, I don't know if we did it this year, but I mean, we can do anything around DEI. We did a graph of the changing racial demographics of the United States over the last 75 years last year. And it was very interesting because it brought in different pieces of information. It was either last year or the year before that someone noticed that what they classified as mixed race was virtually non-existent up to a point. Well, it turned out that one of my sixth graders knew about bloving, the decision, the Supreme Court decision. Well, unfortunately, that turns into a very long data talk, which. But it allows us to go to places that are still relevant to data and math without having sort of like wedging in like fake real-world things that you see in like textbooks. And it's, and which are dry for everyone and frequently completely unrelated to actually what the kids experience. So that's another reason that we've been trying to, you know, push that around a little bit in the middle school, down to fifth, because it just gives you that entry point without having to feel like it's outside the curriculum. It's just context and it allows you to bring in a lot of different things. Sometimes kids will send them to me. If they can find one, they'll send something in, we can use that as long as it works. So other thoughts or you'd like to get down now? They're doing wonderfully.
There's been a few data talks where it's just the wrong thing. Where it's one time, recently, we had one where it was like, what should cost more, milk or gas? And the answers were yes or no. Yeah, we, everyone in our class was like, what is this?
So I did, for a couple of weeks, I did bad data talks and I really found actual examples. This is from upstate New York newspaper. Their poll of the week was which should be cheaper, a gallon of milk or a gallon of gas? And the options were yes or no. And they published the yes or no answers in a bar, in a circle graph.
And people actually answered.
Yeah. And it was all this day and they were so angry at the newspaper. They're like, what? And it was very funny. And so even that, even being able to look at sort of that error analysis that out in the world, right? They're just being inundated with stuff and people aren't really paying attention. So it's been nice, thank you guys, very nicely done.
Thank you.
So it's these kinds of things that we're really just trying to push into critical thinking, away from math just being calculation. Because historically, there's a certain kind of student math classes are optimized for, right? We talked, I know my kids, last year we did a grading project and they were very clear. You're organized, you work quickly, you're independent, you're confident enough to ask questions and that's not every person. So we're really looking at trying to how we can create classrooms, like everyone was saying, starting A through five, up into middle school and up, that everyone has opportunity. Everyone realizes that it's there for them. It's not that they have to try to fit a mold that's set ahead of time. So this is just one example and they're wonderful, so for volunteering. Thank you.
And data talks also being data literate, as the amount of data that we see every day in our adult lives is unbelievably exponentially growing from.
Single most important thing to learn is how to interpret data correctly.
Yeah, I think especially having, remember at the beginning of COVID and the graphs every single day in the New York Times. And they're all different graphs and they're all interesting. Like I do the quiz on the weekends and I'm like, where's that graph coming from? And you really have to learn how to interpret a graph that might look like a graph you've never seen.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the high school with Michelle Guardia.
So that's just a picture of our hallway. Teacher Appreciation Week, we were celebrating ourselves. So at the high school, again, we're all working toward the same goal, which is having students understand math more and it's more accessible to them and they feel more comfortable with it, more confident about it. So some of the things that we've done, we, I would say bi-weekly, we talk about the next-gen math standards, which are changing and aligning. And we are looking at realigning our curriculum. We often have discussions about the order of our courses and what makes more sense for the students. You know, it's always been a very traditional algebra, geometry, algebra two. And our question now is, is that really the best path to take? We were very big on pushing for students to enroll in our electives, especially probability and statistics and AP stats. That was a very big push for us this year and it actually, it looks like it worked. We have, we have a number of, I think we have three sections of AP stats now for next year. Because realistically, that's what they're going to see when they get out in the world. They're going to see the statistics and it doesn't matter whether you're in that STEM area or you're in humanities, that's, it's just everywhere. So we made a big push for that and that worked well. We also redid the financial algebra course. We made it much more interactive, much less calculating. And, I mean, I teach, so I have a little bias toward it. But is it, I think they're often surprised by what they don't know and some of the things that we discover and talk about. I mean, we had a discussion today about credit cards and, you know, it's scary to think that they're, most of these kids are going to go out into college next year and there's a lot of that that they don't know. And I think this would be, I personally think that's a course that should be required of every student. Because as you know, we often get the, when are we ever going to use this?
Tomorrow.
We have changed our vocabulary. We really have tried to get away from coming up with like little trick phrases and things and using more mathematics-specific vocabulary and definitely growth mindset language. In the department of the high school, our big push is to talk about the power of yet. And we talk a lot about how when somebody says, well, I don't get it. We have students that say to each other, well, you don't get it yet. So we've made a big push on that. We've had some project-based learning to show the relevance. That happens sporadically throughout all the courses. Again, we do the best we can. Not everything is relevant. I mean, there are topics that, you know, you're going to rationalize a denominator, probably not going to see it again when you leave high school. But we talk to them about the importance of the logic and the thinking and the process and the whys of it. So we have done some more with that. We have done increased focus on formative assessment to make our decisions. We implemented this year, all of our students, Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II, and our gap students have done a diagnostic test on IXL. They did it in the fall, they did it in the winter, they're going to do it one more time in the spring and we're going to look at their results and see. I have one of my classes that just finished their spring one and I was very pleasantly surprised at the amount of growth I saw. And they were too. We've made a very conscious effort in our classes to remediate gaps. Obviously with COVID, math was, seems to be like the worst hit of all of it. In fact, when we got back into school, one of the things that we found was this, most of our students do not want to work on their Chromebooks. They don't want, they want paper, they want a pencil, they want to be on the whiteboard. Like to them, that's, the physical part of that is more important than anything else. And so we've really almost shifted backwards in that case. But we've also made a conscience, an effort to make sure that when we see those gaps come up in the courses, within the context of the course, we're trying to backtrack a little. We have a few classes that do, they call them Throwback Thursdays. So when they come in on Thursday, there's a warm-up of something that they've learned prior. We have other classes that have a weekly IXL assignment that does review skills from prior years. So we've made a very conscious effort to try and get them quote-unquote caught up. And we also have lots of interactive and digital activities to support our learning. We do a lot of decimals, we have gizmos. I mean, we won't even try that link because it's probably not going to. So we've done a lot, we've done a lot more with that. We also, we also brought in some new technology for our statistics classes. They're a new type of calculator that do all kinds of crazy stuff with statistics. So we brought that in this year. We're getting, we brought in enough for two classes. We're getting another couple of sets for next year. We're very excited about those. The most important thing that has happened in the math department at the high school is across the high school altogether is that our community circles. So if students are coming to math class and they're stressed out and they're worried and they don't feel confident and they don't feel like the teacher understands them and they won't be successful. So we've made a very conscious effort of making our classrooms much more, not just engaging, but caring about each other, talking to each other. We do, like I said, we do the community circles. Every math class does a community circle at least once a week. Some of them are five minutes, some of them are 40 minutes. We have great talks. We try and, we try and change things up. We do the 360 math, which the students love. We have lots of whiteboard tables that the kids like to use. Today, as hot as it was, almost all the math classes went outside today. Today, as hot as it was, almost all the math classes went outside today and worked outside. So like really trying to make it much more of like a family community feeling. And if you notice in the pictures, we, as a department, we've, we've tried to sort of lighten ourselves up a little bit. So we've been participating and, and competing with the science department for our dress up days. But the kids get it, they get a kick out of it. They, they really like that. Like that's important to them, for them to see the human side of us. And overall, we've seen a very positive change in our classrooms this year. Very positive.
Thank you. So that brings us to the end of our presentation. For your question.
This was really interesting. You're talking about so many important skills and transformations in the culture of your classrooms and in the culture that you're creating for students. It's almost like a meta-conversation about math. It's not really a math goal departmental wide that is focused on the math. It's more focused on the accessibility and the mindset and the ability to access math, hopefully as lifelong learners. So it's really, I, I think this is very interesting for us to hear about. It's very interesting work. It seems really connected to the care that I know we're trying to take with respect to students' social, emotional wellbeing, their mental health. I hadn't really understood that the Math 360 wasn't exactly a new curriculum initiative, but rather is an approach to teaching math that you can layer on top of any curriculum. So that was a really helpful clarification. This really provides a lot of insight into the work that's happening across the district with respect to our approach to helping children access math and, and find the relevance, which I don't know that that's exactly what I knew we were talking about. But I, I think that's, that's really edifying for us and for our community. So I really thank you for that. And thank you for the students for being brave enough to share a data talk with us. I'm eager to turn it over to my board colleagues for questions and comments, but we really thank you. This is terrific and thank you for your dedication to, you know, really trying to change the culture of the classroom with respect to how children feel about their abilities to learn and to be math people. It's great.
Can I chime in there? I'm sorry. It just occurred to me when you were saying that. When we teach writing, we don't stop at being able to physically write. The goal is to be a writer. So I think the flow really is we're trying to get students to be mathematicians and work as mathematicians, not just learn the skill of doing the math. Right? And we, the big sea change, I think, was starting to think that way. In some ways, looking at the way ELA started doing workshops, right? At different grade levels, just the idea that just doing problems isn't being a mathematician. So I think, I think that's a lot of where the focus started to drive was like, they should be working as mathematicians at every age, rather than kind of stopping at a mechanical skill, which we don't do in other subjects, right? We continue on, we want, we, our high school science students are working as scientists. That's the whole point. And I think there was, it was harder to get that change in math, just the way the curriculum's always been structured in New York State, having grown up around here. It's always just been that, that pattern of class to class to class. So, and it's been, it's been interesting to be a part of, even as professionally, for all of us, because it, it changes your role in the room, very, very much so.
And I, if you don't mind me piggybacking on that, one of the things that, that we've done work, really the whole district has done, we're looking at differing like seating options and the physical setup of the classrooms. And one of the things in the book that they talk about is defronting the room, you know? And so we've made a conscious, really made a conscious effort of looking at the furniture that we have and not having the teacher standing in the front of the room and being able to like circulate and, and be part of it. And it's very interesting in the book, he talks about like, when you walk into a room, the way it's set up puts your mind in a particular mindset. So if you see it in rows, you're thinking about one particular thing. If you see it in a U shape, you're thinking about one particular thing. So the idea that, and I know it was mentioned before of like changing up the groups and also the physical setting, we think is important to have the students feel like it's not that traditional classroom.
Thank you. Please, Alana.
I really appreciated hearing this. And I remember last year at the presentation, the idea that everybody can do math. And it was really helpful to see kind of how that's being actualized across the whole district today. And I was curious just how, I mean, I, I definitely believe, and I think, as you showed the research, that if you're in the right mindset, you can actually learn. But if you're coming in with a lot of anxiety, it kind of shuts down all that kind of learning. I was wondering how state testing or regions are kind of like playing into this? Or if you've seen any changes with this, like with the Math 360 approach? Maybe it's too soon to kind of see that. But also are we still doing regions in New York?
It's not our decision.
That's right. But it's still, it's still kind of in that same traditional.
Starts in third grade. It's, the test has gotten shorter. It used to be three days and now it's two. It was always timed, which was part of the pressure on children, but now it's untimed. And it's been on time for a few years, so hopefully that'll continue. But it still is taking a test. So it still does cost.
At the high school level, it's exactly the same as the problem. We all did it.
So you still have to kind of offer the courses that speak to that? And then I guess, have you seen, it, it sounds like this is still sort of new, the Math 360 for examples, is it two years or three years?
I'm like seven years.
You're seven years in.
Something like that.
Have you seen any difference that like is kind of measurable? And in addition to sort of students clearly feeling more confident, being able to identify not, not everybody's a math person. It's not one person is a math person, one person isn't. Have you seen sort of like a way of measuring or quantifying that in any way?
Not yet, because we just rolled it out to fifth grade this year. But I think what would be interesting is having those fifth graders now going to sixth grade where the teachers. You know, we've been saying they're coming up. Because I know Jesse always says, like at the beginning of the year, children, if they've never done it before, they're worried. And to, so now hopefully the fifth graders be like, no, we can like, look at people and figure out what they're doing and get ideas from them. So I do think it would be a good thing that we could start to measure and see like as it's coming up.
And at the risk of embarrassing my students here, I would say that truthfully, at least three of the four of them, it was, it's a measurable difference in, in their approach and actual performance. Just, oh, sorry. But it's, it really is. It's I, the difference, and we're doing some other things too. We just started trying doing standards based assessments in sixth grade, how we're, we're scoring them. But the kids that, the number of kids struggling, because this is what, 26 for me? You're 26? The number of kids struggling, I feel, and I have co-teach, which I've had a year where there's six years difference in where the kids are. And the number of kids struggling is much lower than in the past. Because in the past, kids that were like C students had resigned to being C students, right? There was a lot of kids that came in, were going to be successful because they were successful before and it kept perpetuating. And what I found over the years of doing, the last whatever number of years of doing this is that there's a lot of kids moving much more into the area of mastery. Where kids that are struggling, it's a much smaller number of kids because there's just opportunity and they don't resign themselves ahead of time. I can embarrass me and more, or her brother. But there's a saying by the Knicks head coach, which is the magic is in the work. And that's really what we're trying to get across to kids is that if you work, you can learn this. There's, there's nothing stopping you. We're not going to set up a system where that kid has always done well. We'll keep doing well, but you can't because you don't fit that mold. And that opportunity has really moved, in my long experience at this point, a lot of kids into much greater success, literally on, on assessments, like academic performance. And the other side, which is a huge benefit, is just happiness. We have fun and it's, it's enjoyable and they can do well, right? It's not, sometimes rigor gets confused with grinding and you hear grit and it sounds like it's, it's got to be, you know, nose to the, it doesn't have to be, right? You mentioned the play, the musical. I work on the musicals in the middle school and I do some other stuff. It's tremendously hard work. It's brutal. It's a lot of work, right? Rock the hall, a lot of work. But it's work that means something and the amount of time people will put in is just because they feel like they're going to be able to do something with it. And that's really been the change. And so I honestly have seen a big, an actual performance improvement overall, on average, I would say. Which is great to see because I didn't know it was going to happen when I started, right? I just had read about it, you tried.
Jesse, I remember being in your classroom maybe two months ago and seeing students sitting at a table that had a whiteboard surface and an iPad and paper and pencil and was working through a problem and was using all of those tools at the same time. But just that that was fine and they're all accessible and, you know, students sharing work with one another. So it, it just felt more like this collaborative work environment with many tools available, which was really cool to see.
It just reminds me of some, when I first started working for a company that I worked for 10 years, I don't, I no longer work there. I worked for a guy up in Hartford, Connecticut. And we were doing like database design work and, you know, a lot of sort of conceptual, theoretical stuff and that concept of whiteboards and all that. But we didn't have a whiteboard big enough. And my boss had a big corner office and he would write with markers all over the windows, like all over the windows with the writing on the markers. And I, when I went into that, I thought, I just, it just felt so wrong that the guy was like writing on the windows. But then I thought, well, why not, you know? And then other people were writing on the windows. The next thing you know, like every single officer would write all over the windows. But like, why not? But it just, it's that sort of stepping outside what you think is the right way to learn and do things and accepting this sort of new alternative methods. It really, really does make a difference, so.
And mathematicians have been doing that since like the 50s. So it's only new to schools. I mean, it's, it's really true. I mean, they work on, they've been working drawing, doing that stuff for decades.
I, I'd just like to, I mean, commend our students. Thank you ladies so, so much. It was really wonderful. That data talk got me thinking. And I know I didn't have an opportunity to say it, but the first thing that I thought about was it's really a plug for the Learning Cafe. Because that movement in temperature is really what the Sustainability Subcommittee and all of us really should be thinking about, about climate change. And so if that data talk doesn't get us talking about sustainability and bring people out next Wednesday, I don't know what will. So thank you. Thank you.
I think one just last thing is it's harder to hide in a classroom that's like that. I spent my whole education hiding at the back and not raising my hand and not doing the math and no one noticed. So you can't, like you can't really hide and it's a good thing. I might be shy and feel like I can't do this. But you kind of have to get comfortable with being uncomfortable. Like it's okay to not know.
I think this is great. There's something about math that always had, you know, by third grade, people always said, oh, I'm good at math, I'm not good at math. I get it, I don't get it. Which sort of obviously shuts people down. And I think this is a wonderful way of keeping it open. Because it was sort of, in math, you know, there were some kids who figured out long division before others. And they would just be, you know, they give out 10 problems and there'd be three kids already done sitting there and there'd be some kids struggling with it. And then in terms of the relevance, I mean, math was the classic. You had 10 problems to do and why'd you do them? Because they're there. Does the answer matter? Well, if it's right or wrong, it mattered. But that, that was it. It was like a, that, that's all you did with it. And, you know, I'm a big statistics guy and I'm always reminded of the Mark Twain quote, I think it's him, who said, there's lies, there's damn lies and there's statistics. And, you know, like that, that example you saw, you talked about with the milk versus gas, you know? The use of, being intelligent about the use of statistics and being able to spot when it's being used incorrectly, which happens an awful lot in our world right now. I, I think it's in terms of creating tomorrow's leaders and tomorrow, you know, they have to fix all the problems recreated. It's going to be people who are comfortable with data and comfortable statistics and aren't intimidated inherently by it. And I still don't understand what geometry is for, but I, I never got that one.
Building houses.
Yeah.
Riches.
Building.
One question I do have is whenever you have a new teacher, I think I've asked this thing with every presentation we've had. Whenever you have a new teaching technique and it's work, it's enlightening, it's aha. Is there a kind, a pressure about, but we didn't cover what I thought we were going to cover today? And we're falling behind, you know, the curriculum? Or is this, it's just, it, it moves you in the same pace? It's just a different way of doing it?
Yeah. I think that pressure is always there, right? I'm sure our.
Well, I think one of the things, I mean, we're, they know, I'm pretty flexible about pace. It's going to work a little bit fluidly. But usually the pressure about pace is you running a lesson. So when the workload is offloaded to the kids, then it really, the pace is determined by their needs, right? So there's some lessons we do and it's two days instead of one, three days instead of one. And there's some where I'm like, oh, they did this first opening problem and everyone knows this, let's move on. Whereas if I, if I wasn't doing it, I think as Selena was saying, right? If I didn't see everyone working and have everyone's work and have those conversations, I would just go through the paces of the program or a lesson. And for all I know, 80% of the kids are sitting there bored because they know it or are completely lost and then I move on. So I get through the curriculum. It's not, I don't see, I'm, I'm essentially where my colleagues are in sixth grade and we all teach a little bit differently, we all have different kids. It's just a different workflow because you're never, the one thing we've been trying to push away from is dragging some kids through while making other kids wait.
Yeah.
Right? The idea is that.
It seems to happen with math probably more than others because it's just, it's like a new concept or you figure out how to do the problem.
Skill driven, right? Whereas some of them are, when it's content, it's a little different. You can interact with it. But they're going to, people are going to get to a skill at a different pace naturally.
Just to go back to a connection with that tri-state visit and to underscore the enthusiasm that was noted of the students with respect to 360 math. But I think in conjunction with that, a, a comment was offered around systematically capturing student voice and student feedback. And maybe as an effort toward measuring the success of the goal, it would be great to think about guiding questions that could be asked of students at every level to try to capture some data about how they're feeling about math now compared to how they might've felt previously. And connected to that, I just wanted to touch on a comment that you made, Mrs. Guardia, about the sequence of the math in the high school. Because I think if we did talk to students about their experiences with math and if we ask open-ended questions, I think we would hear interesting things from students with respect to that sequence. I did have a conversation recently with a, a parent in the high school who was talking about for students who don't accelerate in math and therefore who are taking geometry in 10th grade, but who are also oftentimes in chemistry, that low and behold, they're sort of doubly struggling because they have to really invoke their algebra skills in chemistry, but now they're in geometry and algebra was never their strength or they probably would have been in the accelerated path. So I think there are just some other unexpected places where kids get that negative reinforcement about, you know, I'm not good at math. Now I can't do chemistry as a result of the sequencing of our math classes. It's just one example, I think, an opportunity to think critically about opportunities and maybe things we could do to remediate that for kids. You know, if they are in geometry while they're in chemistry, could there be some way to offer them, you know, some, some extra support in algebra? Anyway, so I really liked hearing that there's some discussion about that and I really would just advocate for student feedback on all of this great work because I suspect you're going to hear really positive things and that'll be terrific. And it'll help us, you know, move forward and help kids feel even better because their voices are valued in the process. Really exciting. Were there any other questions?
I just wanted to say, I think it's, I really like the yet mentality. And I think the idea that any student can learn something with enough effort and perseverance. And I hope that when kids experience that in math, that they can apply that to other subjects and other parts of their lives. I mean, I think, you know, most skills require practice and with enough practice, you can master many, many things, including math. And I think it's a great skill for them to experience and then be able to apply it to other aspects of their life and their academics. And so I really like that yet mentality. I think it's a great phrase. You just haven't, you just don't know it yet or you don't know how to do it yet. I think that's really great.
It's a big theme in school. I always think about it, you know, we do it in math, but we have kids who start the year off, just as an example, in kindergarten, the monkey bars. They, you know, we have kids starting out, they can make three and by, and they practice and they practice and by the end of the school year, they can make it all the way across.
17 years of psychotherapy.
But it's a huge moment of pride for them when they can, oh, I made it all the way across. And you can kind of see how they build on the whole year. So we, we do apply it to a lot of different areas.
We had an assembly too, the power of yet.
Yes, we did. Yeah.
We did a wonderful job. I think. It was just prior to COVID and I don't think he's resurfaced.
No, he'll come back. Don't worry.
He's not back yet.
No, yeah. It is a theme within our, within our school.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Enthusiasm we see each.
Yeah, to our students and to our guests, please, we welcome you to stay for the duration of the meeting and we will pause if you wish to get home for bed. Thanks again for being with us. Good night.
Yeah, great time.
Wonderful. That was great. Thank you so much. And we're looking forward to transitioning to a conversation related to the tri-state visit. Thank you.
Super. Thank you. So we're happy to have this opportunity tonight to tell you a little bit about the tri-state organization. A number of their members were with us recently for a visit. You can see here the dates of the visit, three days. We feel very fortunate to be part of the tri-state consortium. The district has been a member of the consortium for as long as I've been here and I think predating my time in the district also. We're going to tell you a little bit about what the consortium is. And then we'll share with you a little bit about their most recent visit to our school. So I'll turn over to Mary to begin.
Sure.
Tell us a bit about tri-states. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you. So the tri-state consortium is actually a partner district of the, a partner organization, rather, of the middle states association for accreditation. So United States Department of Ed requires schools to be accredited through middle states, especially if you're applying for federal grants and things like that, as well as some other things. So tri-states is one of many partner organizations to middle states started in 1992. And as you can see on the slides, 48 member districts to date, and they've conducted more than 200 district visits over time, on average giving 13 a year. And they've had two large evaluation studies of the impact of that organization, both revealing high levels of satisfaction in the identified areas. And they've had also some feedback of their own and implemented many of those suggestions as well. So they're really a wonderful group, thought partners. Actually, Jesse, Jeff Swiatowicz and I were part of a tri-state study group this year on grading and equity in grading. So in addition to doing these visits, they offer groups for principals, just study groups around different topics, assistant superintendents and superintendent's meet. So there are all different ways that we're involved in tri-states. And then twice a year, they have a symposium, guest speakers. They usually have one, we have one coming up in May, I believe. So it's really helpful to the district to be a part of tri-states. And another thing that's really helpful is going through the tri-states training. So if you're going to go on a visit through tri-states, you have to be trained. And participating in that training, it's, I think, a three-day training. It's really just a wonderful learning experience. And then going on visits, I've been on several visits over the years to other districts and hosted in a former district and here. And you just learn so much because education can be kind of an isolating profession. You know your district or your school, then you know what you know. But getting out there and seeing other classrooms and schools, hearing about how different districts struggle with things, questions they ask, usually there's so much in common and you learn so much and question things and confirm things. So it's just a wonderful learning experience for many people in the organization.
Mary, can I ask you just two quick foundational questions that would just help me to understand? So first is, is K L S D, so in the way that these districts came to visit us, do we go?
Yes.
And how, how is tri-states funded? Do the member districts participate and fund it and, and or is there?
Yeah, we pay a membership fee.
So it's a membership fee or is there state grants or anything like that? Or is it all the districts contribute and?
All the districts contribute. I don't know if they get any other.
Wouldn't be surprised if they have grant funding, but we don't know.
Just curious on the foundations of it. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So on this slide, you can see the districts that were represented on our most recent visit. So you can see it's a districts from, mostly from Westchester County, but some from New Jersey, some from Connecticut, and different roles that were represented as well. So assistant superintendents, principals, department chairs, directors, coaches, principals, reading teachers, other teachers. So it really was a cross section of different educators from different districts, which was really wonderful. And we had some essential questions. So for this visit, we focused on the learning commitment, which was the focus of our visit five years ago. So for me, this was kind of interesting because when I began in the district, it was July of 2018. And there was supposed to be a tri-state visit that previous March, but it was rescheduled because of snow, believe it or not. So it was rescheduled right after I arrived in October. So it was one of the first things that really helped me learn a lot about the district. It was focused on the learning commitment at that time, which was relatively new then. And now this time, we wanted to go a little bit deeper into the learning commitment. So, and we have since added our focus areas. So we have some questions related to that. So they based the visit on the questions that we posed. And Andrew and I had several meetings with Marty Brooks and Lauren Allen from tri-states to help us kind of think through this and what questions might be most helpful. So as you can see, there's some of the questions were the same questions that we asked last time. So we thought that that might help us to see some growth. But you'll see that last question is a new one. To what extent does the learning commitment reflect the current values and priorities of the district and serve as a vision of the future? And for that, we were really looking at our new graphic with our focus areas there and talking about the ways in which they might help the learning commitment to come alive and where there might be some challenges as well.
Mary, just before we go to this slide, let me just a little bit about the structure of the visit. So the 17 or so visitors that came that were identified on the earlier slide, spent three days with us in the district. On the first morning, we make a presentation to them about the work that we've been doing over the last several years. Thank you to some of our board members who were with us on that first morning. In addition to the visitors, we have some of our own staff members around the district come and sit in. We share with them the nature of the work that we've been doing. We share with them our essential questions. They might, they ask us some clarifying questions to make sure they understand what it is that we're asking them to look at. And then they have a full day and a half in which to go off without us into the schools. And they go into all five schools. Their team divides up, so they've got a few people at each school. They spend time in classrooms and they also meet with groups, individuals and groups. They interview teachers, administrators, students, parents at each of the schools. They have the full day and a half to do that. And they come back on the, it was a Wednesday to Friday. They come back on the Friday morning. They have some work time among themselves to debrief what they've seen, to share across the schools what they've seen, to start to think about some concluding remarks that they want to share with us. And then again, thank you to some other board members who joined us on that Friday morning, along with some other members of our staff who came and sat in. Because then on the last day, they do what they call a kind of fishbowl activity where we sit in a circle with some of the visitors and they both ask some additional clarifying questions and they begin to share out some of what they've seen in the schools and some of the questions they have and some of the constructive feedback that they have for us. So it's all done through talking on that day, but they're also recording the conversation. And then a few weeks go by and they issue us a written report. So we've just seen a draft of that report, which is the basis of the brief presentation that we have for you tonight. But we think it's representative of the full report that will, that will be finalized soon. So the next few slides here on this one, put my glasses on. These are just, we pulled out some of the language that we heard, some really nice things that we heard. So you see here during our three-day visit to the district, our team was consistently impressed by the admirable level of energy and professionalism that the teaching and administrative staff bring to the district. Students described their schools with pride and an overall positive attitude. Parents mentioned that the district is serious about SEL, which they believe supports the overall student learning experience. Here's what we've been hearing about tonight. Fifth graders in all three elementary schools shared the 360 math as learning that reflects the learning commitment and love this learning in that it includes cooperative groups, learning together and thinking critically. And the visiting team was impressed by the broad evidence of the learning commitment and DEI and SEL initiatives. Those are two of the three focus areas throughout the district. The team was able to collect observations, feedback and anecdotal evidence of the awareness and participation of teachers and students in particular. Certainly those are all nice things to hear and the nature of the feedback on that Friday, there, there was a lot of very positive comments. A lot of them are very focused on our students, which we were really thrilled to hear. And a lot focused on what they talked about as a return from COVID, the real focus on teaching and learning. And again, these are folks coming from schools all around the region. They've been through the same experience. They know what a challenge it was and they were impressed by the focus that they saw in all of our classrooms across the district. So then just, we have just two more slides here. The first with some of the commendations that they offered and then following that, some of the recommendations. So again, these are just excerpts from a draft document. So again, we had asked about the learning commitment and they point out that the components of the learning commitment are valued from what they could see, engagement, relevance and active learning. You're going to start to imagine what's coming in the recommendations by what's missing in some of the combinations. But here you see that the focus areas of DEI and SEL are valued. The district's significant commitment and demonstrated value to their students' wellbeing through SEL was evident in classrooms, hallways, student work and interviews. Examples of availability of both systemic and individual support for the learning commitment as well as the DEI and SEL were evidenced throughout the district. Students who we met with expressed that their most enjoyable, effective learning experiences are those that reflect how the learning commitment is defined. And the student staff, parents expressed positive feedback around community circles. So that's high school specific and their impact on students' social and emotional learning. And in classrooms, we observed and teachers we spoke to, it was evident that teachers know and care deeply about their students. So that's certainly really lovely to hear. And building administrators are supportive of teachers trying new ideas, programs and instructional practices in their classrooms. So again, those are some excerpts and we're very happy to hear that. And then of course, the real reason to do these visits is to get constructive feedback. So because the, the goal is to be a learning and growing organization. So among some other suggestions, and you've actually heard some echoed already tonight. The first there being to consider additional avenues for listening to staff and students, particularly regarding the district's area of focus. So they heard some things and they actually, they do comment on the fact that they see such value in these focus groups that they come and they do these visits. And I think they all said, why don't we do this in our own schools? You know, they do it when it's constructed for them and they come on these visits and then they all realize, you know, we had struggled to find the time when we're all going about our daily work in our own schools. But again, they're making that recommendation to us and it does make sense. And then the next one, you see further develop definitions of engagement, relevant and active learning with specific look fours so that staff and administration have more common language and consistent understanding of the learning commitment. So that's something we've actually, even since the visit, we've started to do some thinking about that and some work with our administrators about developing more concrete and more consistent definitions and criteria to look for in classrooms. The next one, and this is one, so you didn't hear sustainability in the prior slides. You heard quite a bit about SEL and DEI. So here it says articulate expectations and action steps around the incorporation and implementation of sustainability into curriculum, school spaces and daily routines. So it's not that they didn't see evidence of sustainability, they did. What they pointed out to us was that there was quite varied understanding of the word sustainability itself and what it means and how it's to be interpreted and what it is that we're thinking about when we ask it to be a focus area in our school. So again, we're really fortunate to have a Learning Cafe coming up and we're already doing some work with our administrators on further defining that term so that it's more consistently understood across the district. And then lastly, you see there provide additional opportunities for professional learning regarding difficult conversations, particularly in the areas of DEI and LGBTQ plus topics. So perhaps not surprising, in the world that we live in today, there is still, exists some anxiety around having these important conversations, how to have them, how best to have them in challenging environments and wanting to do them as well as possible with our students. So very good food for thought for us there as we continue to think these are really important areas of focus. So that's a quick summary. It was a really great visit. It's a lot of time for the folks that come from those other districts, it's a lot of time for our own staff. I want to thank, actually you saw Selena was here today. All of our staff developers really helped a lot in organizing and supporting the visit. Mary did a ton of work in organizing it. And we really want to thank tri-states because it's a great and very helpful organization. And it gives us a good focus for moving forward.
Great. Well, thank you for putting together this synopsis of the draft report. And thank you for facilitating the tri-state visit, the three-day visit. There were a lot of really terrific visitors, critical friends among us. And, you know, really valuable conversation and questions and the invitation to many people to participate in those focus groups. It's just really terrific and we're fortunate that we were able to be in the queue for this year coming out of the pandemic. So thank you so much. And, you know, interesting to hear the commendations and the recommendations and some of the work that you're already starting to do in response. Does anybody have a question or a comment about what came out of the?
How often do they come? Every three years?
It's usually every three or four years. I think it might be every fourth year. We were a little delayed. So usually I think it is every, by two years, you have a follow-up visit on the visit. And then two years later, you'd have a new visit. And so we were a little delayed. It was kind of a five-year cycle rather than a, a four.
Because our follow-up would have been during.
2020.
Something happened.
That was, yeah.
And how often did you guys, our staff serve in tri-state?
It's voluntary, so it's hard to predict. And it's not, you know, there are some folks across the district who have engaged in it and done it, but it's not, they're not called on a regular cycle.
Yeah, I think I've been on two visits since I've been here. It's a lot of time and so we really appreciate the people who take the time because we all know it's, it's really hard to take three days. But it's so valuable on the other end. And they are three days of great learning, even when I'm visiting a different district. So, yeah.
I think, I think they got it right. I think their recommendations are understandable.
Yeah.
I'm in particular interested in the second one around our learning commitment and defining sort of those words that we use, engaging, relevant and active learning. I really liked that they sort of highlighted that and I can see where the commitment as it's written might be a little nebulous at the classroom level, you know, as your teacher say, well, how do I apply that to my class? And I think it would be really helpful for us. I like that, that term look fours. So, you know, if we could sort of put together a document that might sort of break out those three components and say, you know, if you're, if you're engaging, it looks like this. These are examples of what engagement looks like. I think that's a really, really good observation on their part. I like it because as you said earlier today, we start almost every presentation with a learning commitment, right? And we're all just so familiar with it or we're so familiar with that diagram. And then yet, there's a couple of terms in there that maybe we could lighten up the definitions a little bit. I really like it.
Corey, exactly what you just said really was how I heard some of the feedback on that morning where they shared out, where they recommended not only focus groups for students, but focus groups for teachers where they would be holding up examples, like exemplary student work, student activities, projects that would be exemplary and where we could move closer toward a shared understanding or shared definition. It seemed like an exciting opportunity to bring people together, together across grade levels and disciplines and to, to really just evaluate student work through the lens of what are we looking for?
To expand out those definitions. I mean, it would be, I think it's an interesting, you know, it's, it's sort of cross grades, cross schools. Everybody can participate and it looks different in different scenarios. It would be an interesting exercise.
Yeah, it's interesting. We actually created a, we use that glide format again. So it was just an electronic kind of web app where all the different departments submitted what they thought were strong examples from that department of the learning commitment. And, and we submitted that to the tri-states visitors, right? But we thought this is going to be a great tool for us to use. So I'm having a district-wide curriculum council meeting with all the leaders actually on Monday and wanted to share it there because I don't think they've seen all of it. And couldn't you use that or our new teacher orientation, right, in August? Getting them to see what these examples look like. And then thinking about like, would you say that's an exemplar or would you not? What are the characteristics? So it's really interesting. It's also the art of interpretation, right? With any of these statements, we all interpret them a little bit differently based on our background knowledge and our experiences. But it's interesting to think about kind of developing more consistency and consensus, I'd say, around what it means.
Would you be able to say a word or two about the study that you mentioned that you and some of your colleagues participated in around grading and equity? And whether does Katona Lewis-Burrow ultimately benefit or have, have access to the outcome of the study that you participated in?
It wasn't a study, but a study group.
Okay.
So we were reading a book. So we were reading a book called Grading for Equity. I'm not remembering the author's name offhand, but it is, it's actually sparking some work in the middle school around, you know, what is equitable grading? Like, the author really makes you question, is there any truly objective way to grade? You know, when you think about, what is it based on? Is it based on your assessments? Are your assessments really getting at what you've taught? How closely is your instruction linked to your assessment? And if I'm doing this in my classroom, and the classroom next door is doing something slightly differently, isn't that even different? Or how much, you know, effort, participation, things like that play into grading even within one's school? So it just really made you think about what grading means and what it doesn't mean, and what really promotes more learning.
Yeah.
But also knowing that, you know, we are in a larger system that really does value grading. So, you know, thinking through some of that, but we want to think about grading that promotes learning.
That's great to hear. And just to connect it back to what we were listening to with the math presentation, I didn't want to turn the attention to grading, but when Mr. Weiss made the comment about the magic is in the work, I, my thoughts did turn to grading, and that oftentimes with math, the grading is sometimes about the work and sometimes about the final answer. And I was just kind of thinking about the, you know, percentage of a grade that is which part the work or the actual outcome. So it's really, it's great to hear that you were part of a committee looking at equity and grading, and so you would have been a representative from Katona Lewisboro, among other representatives from some of the other member?
Yeah, many different districts. They were mostly Westchester, I think a few Jersey, but that's what's another value. So we were all reading the same book. We'd come together and have conversations, but you got to get the perspectives of people from other districts that you never get to really converse with, so.
That's great.
Really interesting.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments, suggestions? Well, thank you. We really appreciate the update and appreciate the opportunity to have been visited by the Tri-State Consortium, very much looking forward to the next visit, which unfortunately won't be for a few years' time, but it gets, it sounds like there's a follow-up in a couple of years. Thank you. Okay. I know that we postponed our board subcommittee reports, so perhaps we can just briefly turn our attention to those, and then we'll move into public comment and the consent agenda. Just looking at board subcommittee reports, was there anything from the audit committee for tonight? About facilities committee, do you want to update everyone on the focus?
Sure. We've had focus groups, most recently with librarians and assistant principals, to talk about the upgrades at the elementary schools, which are very exciting, and the libraries and former computer labs. The other focus groups have been proceeding, seeing, you know, some changes in, in design, which has been exciting. And then we'll continue doing that as we work with the architect to really refine and spec out what's going to happen at the schools. The finance committee hasn't met, I think, since our last meeting, we're meeting on Monday. We are getting ready to put our findings in the presentation for, I think, June meeting.
Wonderful. Looking forward to that. Thank you. Parent council.
I don't think we've had a parent council, their monthly meetings, we have one upcoming, I think, next Friday. Not tomorrow, leave from tomorrow.
At a reprieve.
Exactly. For sustainability?
Sure, yeah, please, go ahead.
For sustainability, so we have had a number of really positive meetings. We're making very good progress on the goals we set forth for ourselves this year, primarily around greenhouse gas emissions and establishing some goals there, and we'll have, we'll have a big reveal at the April 25th meeting. We've also been doing some work around establishing curriculum goals, so how we include sustainability in the curriculum, which is right on point here from some of the observations that we saw from Tri-State. We've also been working around engaging students and, and understanding more about how students have already engaged themselves, maybe a little behind the scenes from our perspective, but we're trying to build collaboration with the student body there, as well as outreach to the community, and much of that might actually be through the students and engaging with families of, of students who are interested. So a lot of really good work going on, the culmination of which will be a presentation of the board on April 25th, and right before that, Andrew has already mentioned that we'll have a presentation. There'll be plenty of tables and people presenting in the lobby way before the meeting, I'm really looking forward to that. And so, yeah, good progress. We're working on the presentation for the board at the moment, and I think we have a meeting next week.
Yeah.
I think our last meeting before the board presentation. So, yeah, lots of good progress.
That's great.
And I'll just say, many of the community, the community members who sit on the committee meet themselves separately, so we only meet once a month, and they've engaged, they're so excited and so driven and motivated to do this work, that they're meeting themselves on a weekly basis. They meet every Friday in person. I think tomorrow's will be a Zoom call, but it's really wonderful to see the level of commitment across the community to, to keep this moving forward.
That's great. That's really great to hear. Looking forward to the presentation at the next meeting. Thank you. How about policy, Bill?
We have two policies up for a third read today, which I thought I would briefly just outline, as we usually do before a third read. So one of them, we discussed in more detail last time, the disclosure of wrong for conduct whistleblower protection. And again, looking at the track changes version of this, the changes are, one set of changes is widening the pool of people to whom wrongdoing can be reported. So in some cases, it's, it's adding district employees can report concerns to a governmental agency or entity, sometimes it's including the superintendent in the circle. One other change was, in terms of reporting things, the previous policy may seem like it was mandatory to report, you know, if you're comfortable, if you think it's necessary type of thing. We don't want to create any jeopardy for anybody for not reporting anything.
I think we, I think we can't say to people that they must. I think that was a change that came to us through council.
But that was that one. And then the purchasing policy is a policy that's, we, in creating this policy, it'll enable us to retire several other policies and regulations. So again, the, the changes are, things, some things were taken out, mostly because they were either redundant, or they were, you know, my style was more a tight policy saying that, you know, we don't need a policy explaining to us why it's good to do ethical behavior, right? It was just to talk about, you know, who's responsible for what type of thing. So one was including a deputy purchasing agent as can do some things, otherwise we were sort of wondering what would happen if the purchasing agent wasn't available. I'm not sure what else is towards the end. One other change in the back here was, one of the things we talked about was the judgment whether something should be repaired or something new purchased, and the previous policy had like a number, 75% of the cost. And we made it more, if the purchasing agent determines it's fiscally prudent, because there could be very different scenarios that would make it very different, of whether it's worth fixing versus buying something new. And I, I think that was really the substance of the changes for this. This was more about consolidating things, because we get these reviewed by BOCs, and so I think, and the state. And so there was just a recommendation to tighten up these policies and get rid of the redundant or other policies.
This policy was also very carefully vetted by Danell and the business office, and also by legal counsel who specialize in purchasing practices for districts, to be sure that we're following all the appropriate legal compliance issues.
Right. This is where all the checks and double checks are, and how money, how decisions are made, and how money is, is allocated.
Thank you. And then just briefly, with regard to Westchester, Putnam County, work tonight actually was their prospective school board member workshop, and they had about 50 people from across the member district's register, which is really terrific. So that was a panel opportunity to answer questions from individuals who were considering running for school board. And prior to that, a couple weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend a two-part education law workshop, and just wanted to point out that all of these slides are available on the West Putt website. If you navigate to programs, past programs, you'll see that there are slides pertaining to topics that range from social media, privacy rights, and accountability, to collective bargaining highlights, legal aspects of executive session, comparing roles, the superintendent and the board, legal limitations on Board of Education relationships with PTO and booster club organizations, really a diverse set of topics, and just terrific information emanating from school board attorneys from across the region, including our own, which was really exciting to see. We were very well represented on the panel. And I think even just reviewing the slides would be of interest, so I encourage you to take a look, and I feel really grateful to all of the school attorneys who were willing to donate their time for ongoing professional learning. And then just, you know, the latest, and Danell probably knows more than I do, but the governor has asked at least twice for extensions to the budget, and our general feeling, just to wrap up the advocacy piece, was that by and large, we hope, we believe the budget is very supportive of public school education. We felt heard as a result of many of the opportunities we had to interact with local legislators with respect to a couple of things being taken out, like the tutoring set aside is anticipated, I believe, to be taken out, or it was proposed by the?
I think we're hopeful, but not certain.
Well, hopeful, I should say, hopeful that the one-house budget was recommending that, and there was money put in for ongoing foundation aid study and a working group to revise the formula. So those are at least two items where we can say we weren't completely unheard. It's, you know, hardly like wild enthusiasm, but it's pretty good. And, you know, that was all that I wanted to share. Did you have a question?
The formula is the formula, is this the, the ever-present formula of how they decide what districts get what allocation?
Yes, and I believe it hasn't been revised since 2007, and because this year was the year where like that final tranche of money was being replenished or allocated to schools, the question arose, like, what's next? And, and, and who's going to be minding the process? Who should be at the table in thinking about any revisions to the foundation formula? So it felt as if we were kind of heard with respect to some urgency around tending to that. And I think that brings us then to public comment, and I believe a couple of people have signed up. Welcome, and thank you for your patience, and it's my pleasure to invite Erica Glick to speak with us first.
Last Friday, I received an email from a parent who's a member of our SEPTO's executive board asking for my help. She indicated that she was on the interview team for our new assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction. And her quote, "Being that I'm not an expert in this area, I would appreciate if you would develop one question that I could ask and key words that I should listen for in answers. I know that this is a concern for many parents in my district. As you know, I've spent these past four years attending board meetings and pointing out the tremendous flaws in our current literacy curriculum. I think we can all agree that the position of assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction is incredibly important, as this individual is responsible for curriculum and instruction. While I can appreciate that I am probably the last person you wanted on this committee, as I am the most vocal about our literacy program, I found it interesting that an individual who is admittedly unfamiliar with literacy reached out to me for one question." Actually, not interesting. It was completely offensive. "One question with some key words to listen for, as if this incredibly complex situation could be summed up with one question and a few key words. Such a missed opportunity to actually do better. I hope your hiring committee did, in fact, include someone who understands the complexity of reading instruction and is willing to ask the hard questions, especially as you've indicated, many of you are not the experts. I do want to thank you, though, for proving once again the smoke and mirrors game we play in our district. You are talking out of both sides of your mouth. Let's look at the facts. New York State ELA test scores, we earn Cs. Some years, we earn Fs. KLSD says New York State test scores aren't a great measure. We can't rely on those. But KLSD also says we're top in the state, but I thought it wasn't a great measure, so which is it? KLSD says we shouldn't look at New York State data, we have our own data, lots of data, 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 data. Great, can we look at that data? No, we're not going to show you that data. It's a bit curious. We say we're doing fine, but we keep patching our curriculum. Doesn't the patch mean something was needed or perhaps lacking? And then you say that everyone is patching. We're doing the same as everyone else. But shouldn't we want to do better? In regards to our district's approach to teaching children to read, we're doing just fine, says KLSD. This isn't an issue, you are a vocal minority. Except for those 200 folks who signed a literacy petition years ago, and the almost 1,000 who voted for me last year in the election, and the overloaded tutors, and the busloads of children who go to Winward and Eagle Hill and other programs, and the hundreds of children in our special education department who aren't reading either. Our district subscribes to an inquiry-action research cycle. It's a great presentation at our last meeting about that. We question, we plan, we act, and we analyze, but appears not for our literacy program. We need to engage earnestly. We need to be less embattled and more inquisitive. We need to be less reactive and more proactive. Form a literacy committee. You don't have to have all the answers, but you can know enough to know that you can do better for more children. A board meeting isn't the forum to address these concerns, it's to do the board's business. I hear that. What is the forum? I've gone to superintendents' coffees, I've met with leadership. Legitimately, I again ask, what is the forum? In August 2021, after hearing my daughter speak out publicly at a Board of Education meeting, Mr. Selesnik told her, we need to do better. I want to know, did it work? Are we doing better? Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth McGoldrick.
I'm in that stage, right? The glasses up, glasses down, I can't decide, but, so my name's Elizabeth McGoldrick, it's nice to see you guys. I came because I was so delighted by the last presentation that I, last, I don't remember any weeks ago, when you had the, the research and inquiry, and the vibe in the room was so delightful and so happy, and so positive, and it felt like, yeah, this is what, this is why we do this, right? This is, we had teachers, and they were so appreciative. And then the same thing happened this evening, which was lovely, and to feel the sense of that, that we're, I belong to a community where people want to do great things for all children. And that we write it down, it says in our, as Murray said, or Mr. Rick said in our last, the last meeting, like, it literally says that in our, it was so amazing how parallel it was, the language that was in the, the, sorry, it's very mouthful, inquiry action, that too, yes, but the inquiry action, that it was a really parallel with those things. And I, I feel so hopeful based on those experiences. I feel so hopeful because it seems so clear to me that we have a leadership that is eager to, that is eager to engage, that does want to understand, does want information to say, well, geez, I can't, what is happening? What is happening with our early reading scores? Are we doing, are we doing better? We bought this bargain, we did this. Is it working? Like, let's find out. And that is why I'm here, to say, please, I urge you, let, let's pull up that slide about the research, inquiry, research, action, research, all of that, and our mission statement. And imbue it in your, in your reflection on this particular topic, because for some reason, I don't know why, it's embattled, there's probably a thousand reasons, but it is something that is very valuable to our community, it's valuable to our future, it's like sustainability. It's like sustainability, right? It is something that is critical to how we run our schools. And we can, just like with sustainability, we can, it wasn't that we were doing something terrible, it wasn't that we had, oh my gosh, there's something to hide. It was, we can do better. And so you formed a committee with a group of people with diverse voices and different backgrounds, and you meet regularly, and you examine, and you ask, and you make inquiry, and you report out. Again, committee doesn't make a decision. The committee reports to the people who make the decisions. But they are charged with the task of helping to unpack something that's very complex and something equally critical. So I hope that I get to get some good news at the next meeting. Hope you have a good night.
Thank you. Is anybody else waiting to speak during public comment before we close the period? Thank you very much. I think this brings us to our consent agenda. I'm at 11.01. Actually, can we wait till, if you don't mind? Let's, let's go through our consent agenda and then come back. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, great. We're going to do the consent agenda. And I'm not aware of any items that need to be pulled out. I'm going to move the consent agenda in its entirety. If somebody would like to second it? Thank you, Rory. And were there any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Six, zero. Thank you so much. That brief delay. And we're now at board discussion, dialogue, new business. And I would like to apologize that I did forget to offer one note of gratitude in board announcements. And I would like to thank the administration for the enormous work that's happening behind the scenes to convene representative search committees for a number of open positions. And I would like to report out to the board that, first of all, thank you for entrusting me to serve as the board's representative on one of these committees recently, and that the candidates with whom we spoke went out of their way to comment on the complexity and thoughtfulness of the questions, not all of which we actually got to, because their answers were so thoughtful and responsive. But also to thank you for empowering those of us on the search committee to be invited to submit our own questions without the promise that they might be included, but to also guide you in how you're thinking about the questions, that I think it's, it's very helpful to those of us who are laypeople to also feel that our voices still can be heard and that we have the opportunity, which I actually availed myself of as well, although I didn't submit a question in the end for full disclosure, reach out to other community members whom we trust and respect and who are in fact experts in, in other subject areas. So for example, I reached out to someone who's a district administrator at a neighboring elementary school to have this same conversation about what would you ask? And, you know, in the end, as I said, I didn't submit a question, but really appreciate the opportunity to be invited into that process and that in the end, you know, you didn't need my question because the questions were so thoughtful and appropriate and really elicited very important thoughtful responses from the candidates. So thank you, because that seems like an enormous amount of work. And thank you for the representative nature of the committees and for attracting amazing talent to this district. Really, it's really heartening and a very exciting time for Katona Lewisboro, present company accepted, with all due respect, obviously. So I'm so sorry that I forgot to mention that, and I appreciate having had the opportunity to be reminded that I really was eager to share with you the experience that I recently had. Not, Brett, to inform you that I am going to make a motion to adjourn back into executive session after we look ahead to future meetings. We can quickly look to Monday, April 17th. Say it again? I paused. Did you?
Sorry.
I'm so sorry, that was for you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Please go ahead.
You modeled more graciously than I was going to. So thank you for doing that. And it gave me pause. I wanted to correct some of the mischaracterizations that we heard at the microphone tonight. The first being that the committees that you just reflected so thoughtfully and accurately weren't as you've just described them to be. And I think it's really unfortunate that the community would be given the opportunity to believe that they were anything other than what you've just described. The committees are made up of representatives from across the district. We welcome parent perspective on those committees. We're thrilled to have it there. And the questions are put together very thoughtfully over time to give us the most insight into the candidates. And then as to the various things that we heard about state data and how the district chooses to represent it or doesn't choose to represent it, I think there were misrepresentations put out there also. Putting a letter grade on the state data is not something that the state does. I understand that the speaker chooses to put a letter grade on it. The state doesn't choose to do that. We have, it's absolutely true in the past that we've said that the state data is one measure and we look at many different measures. The reason I've reflected it here in the past at times when I wouldn't normally is was in response to some of the mischaracterization that we've heard from the microphone. And I think it's important to try to correct misrepresentation when we hear it. And that's the only reason I would refer to it. So that's all I was going to say.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, I, I think data is important.
Yeah.
And valuable. And when we walk through the buildings, as some of us recently did for Meadow Pond, it is enormously helpful to us to see the manner in which our teachers, our staff, our administrators in the buildings are reviewing what I would almost refer to as, you know, sort of granular microdata around the progress of each and every emerging reader in our schools. And it's, it's tempting to weaponize data, and that's probably the worst use of data. And were we to weaponize it, you know, we might point to one cohort in one building in one of our elementary schools where 91% of the third graders got a three or a four, which is hardly failing, and 96% of the girls did, you know? So we can all weaponize the data, but that really doesn't help us to help each and every child learn to read. What does help us is living in a community that has routinely supported a budget that includes the resources that we need and that are always evolving and that we've had opportunity to discuss with veteran staff, with prospective staff, resources that are necessary to best meet the needs of our emerging readers. And so thank you to the community for continuing to support us in the evolution of those resources. And thank you to our district leadership and our teachers for advising us with respect to how best to meet the needs of our kids.
One more thing. Thank you again, Marjorie. We heard the word embattled used tonight, and I want to make it clear that we don't feel embattled, as you've just so well said there. You know, in the, in the popular media, the, the phrase reading wars likes to be used quite a bit as if there's a war. We don't feel that there is. We feel there's a great deal more agreement than anything else around the different ways in which reading instruction should occur. As has been made clear tonight, we're in regular contact with our educational partners around the region and around the state. We're in continual conversation with how they're approaching the topic, changes they're making. We're thoughtful with them about it. We look at their results. We've met with community members to listen to them. We've asked them what they would like to see. We've asked them what they're looking for. And we've also asked if there are examples of public schools who do things very differently than we do, who achieve very different results than we do, better results than we do, we would like nothing more than to visit those places. We haven't been able to identify those places. The truth is, most of the districts in our region, who, those that achieve better results than us, and there are some, follow a very similar model to the model that we follow. And again, but that model in all places is continually evolving as we all learn more, as we speak to each other, as we think about it. So we don't feel embattled over it. Continually listen and think and reflect and make changes as they feel appropriate, and we'll continue to do that. And we thank the community for being involved in that with us.
Thank you.
I think another point that has to be made is that you sort of can't call, you can't have it both ways. You can't seek a district that is open to change and new information and new research. And if they make the change, you get charged with, well, since you made a change, it means something was wrong. So, you know, you, you can't, you can't do it both ways. And I have been eager to look at, play with, manipulate, analyze the data in our district for nine years. And if anything, you know, I'm more in the data camp than other people in terms of evaluating the health of a district. The, the data concerning our district has never given me concern. The three through eight testing, lots of changes because of the COVID epidemic, and the state has counseled us to be cautious in how we interpret this data based on that and other changes. But to leave the impression that somehow, you know, in wholesale, the Katona Lewisboro School District children are not learning what they should be learning, it's just factually
And may we move ahead to future meetings? So Monday, April 17th, finance committee meeting, as was mentioned, meeting at 7:00 PM in the district office. Friday, April 21st, sustainability, we'll meet at 8:15 AM in the district office. Tuesday, April 25th, is our next Board of Education meeting here in the high school library. And again, we're hoping to have a great turnout because we're going to have a lovely sustainability presentation in the gallery, followed by our, our meeting and our presentation from the Sustainability Subcommittee. And Friday, April 28th, policy will meet at 9:00 AM in the district office. Did I miss anything? And this brings us to 18.01, and I'm going to make a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss the employment history of individual staff member, seconded by Rory. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Six, zero. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a great night.